Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May meeting of the Greencastle Common Council. If I could have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Linda, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Mark Hammer.
Here.
Counselor Adam Cohen.
Here.
Counselor Stacy Langdon.
Here.
Counselor Veronica Pedro.
Here.
Counselor Cody Eckard.
Here.
Counselor Dave Murray.
Here.
Counselor Tyler Wade. I know he's here.
Yeah, he's here.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Our first item of business is public petitions and comments. Is there anyone here with public petition other than what's on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We'll move into two special requests. The first is for the Putnam County Fair Parade, and Nancy Michael from the Parade Committee is here. And I mentioned to Counsel that I asked Nancy to come this evening, given that there were several items of uncertainty as she was planning for the parade. And one of those got resolved because we found out the deadline that's going to start work on the drainage project on Jackson Street will occur after the fair parade, so that eliminated that one. But she's got several others that she's dealing with, so I asked her to come a little bit early so she could have some flexibility as she looks forward.
Well, I will say that it's nice to see you or it's nice to hear you. So with that being said, to the mayor and Counsel, I really appreciate you letting me come to the meeting tonight. I'll just say off first thing, there is nothing normal about planning this parade. I wish I could tell you, you know, if it wasn't for the year it is, I'd be here next month for the first time. You all have been super helpful, and we know it's been boilerplate. You know, I know about my permits, I know about the school, I know about the Council. All I gotta do is come and ask, and you usually say yes, right?
Always.
This year, in all that order. But this is very abnormal, and so I'm coming to you tonight. You may go, why are you here? But I will tell you, there's lots of conversations that I'm having, and there's lots of things that I'm trying to figure out. Our Board has, our Committee has met. We have only met probably once in the last five weeks because we've kind of been waiting to see what's going on with COVID, what's going on with the virus, and what is the state going to do for us. As I said, this is not normal, so planning this parade is not normal. We are actually only one week out from when the Governor says that we can convene as a state and possibly do some reopening. With that being, because of the process and because of the permitting process, there are things that I have to have done. I have to get my okay from the school. And I will tell you at this point in time that I don't have it in writing yet. I am aware that there is an approval, but there is going to be a contingency, as I understand a stipulation that the school will have to be open. And that is a necessary area in order for us to be able to do our staging with all of our events. If everything is perfect, everything is the same. We're happy to say that that 231, our rerouting of 231, is not an issue. So if everything is perfect and everything is, could be somewhat normal, we could continue to do exactly where we are. But we are contingent upon the school being able to use that lot. I come to you because, you know, this parade is in your city, and you're a very important part of the conversation, so I do want to know what some of your concerns and your thoughts are. Some of the factors that's going to make it possible for us to execute this parade are going to be, one, number one, Purdue Extension is going to be making a determination tomorrow, May 15th, about whether or not they're going to be able to be face-to-face fairs during the month of July. And while I could have waited until tomorrow, I felt like waiting another four weeks to talk to you was not a good idea. I felt like I needed to come anyway. So tomorrow, we will know about the face-to-face reality from Purdue Extension. Obviously, one of the things that we are adamant about we want to do, and Mark, thank you very much for your email that you sent me at the beginning of the week with your questions and concerns in there, there's no questions that we want to make sure that we can keep participants and observers safe. You know, questions that we've got, and with that, you know, how do we do that? And we all know the words are social distancing. And can we monitor that? Can we police that? Can we control that? And I'm going to be real honest and tell you, I do not believe we can. As far as I can't tell people in their lawns, I can't have people going up and down. One, I don't, I barely have enough volunteers to execute the parade the way we do. And last year, we did a great job because we had a lot of great volunteers. But to add the level of having somebody go up and down the sidewalk and say, oh, family, hey, you're sitting too close together, you know, or you're too close to the curb, I'm sure there's a lot of people that would like to say they don't want me to tell them whether or not they can sit together or not. That's a whole nother issue, right? So that's a fight that you don't really want to have. You know, I gotta ask myself is, where are people that are going to be typically in the parade? How ready are they going to be to be able to get their teams together or their 4-H clubs together to be able to do those? Mark, you asked me about handing out candy and water. I mean, we're in an environment now that we can't trust the germs on something that we pass to somebody else, so can we have handout? I'm guessing the answer could be no. We've got to know how, as we reopen the state, how the virus is going to react to the reopening. Is, are we going to see a surge? You know, is the Governor going to end up changing his mind after he sees some results? Is he going to push it out? I don't know yet. We are still a little bit of a wait-and-see. We just haven't pulled the plug yet. June 1st is probably our date because we're going to know so much more information. So we have a lot of aspects that we have to vet through, but I have to get my permit into NDOT. I can always pull it if we decide we're not going to have it. I do need to come and ask you, may I? May I do our street closures? The parade is set for July 12th. It is set to be executed at 2:00 from the Point of the Dairy Castle, we all know it as, at the Y. To come downtown, our staging would be at the high school parking lot. Our areas of staging, as always, would be in the park. It would be on Garden Side and Stadium. It would be on East Washington Street, and we would be starting out registration in the Greencastle High School and Middle School parking lots, provided that we can use them. Because the parade would start at 2:00, I would want to close those staging area streets, as you will see on here at East Washington Percy, East Washington Percy to Wood Street and Wyandotte Street. I would want to close those at noon, and I would want to close all other streets that are going to be affected by the route at 1:00. That gives law enforcement time to get into position. It gives Brad Phillips and the Department of Public Works time to get the barricades up at the right places, and it just allows us time to get people lined up and staged so that we are ready to go at 2:00. So with all these factors, again, you're probably wondering why I'm here. Part of the reason why I'm here is because I think you need to know what kind of conversations we're having. I think the public needs to know what kind of conversations that we're having, and that we are trying to sort out whether or not July 12th is going to be a doable date for us on May 14th. So we continue to plan, we continue to gather information. Mike with Main Street Greencastle today sent out a great survey. You know, we're kind of interested, we're very interested, too, on what is people's comfort level of going out in the public, you know? I have to think about what's the comfort level of our entries. We have a way to communicate to all those people because we have a list and emails that we always communicate with them. So we will probably soon, if need be, sending an email, trying to find out whether or not we would even have people in it. The last thing I want to have is a very, a fizzle for a parade. You know, it's been a fantastic tradition and a fabulous event for the community and the county, and it's all about 4-H at the end of the day. So whether or not Purdue Extension will allow those 4-H entries and the decision by the Fair Board that's going to be happening, I think next week they're going to be having a meeting, so they'll be having some extra conversation. I think Veronica talked to me about some, a great alternative, the virtual parade. I'm not for sure how, exactly how we would execute that. I understand you may have stipulations, and I will tell you that my stipulation would be is I would come back to you in June is the best I could do. So I'm open for questions about the request and anything else we're considering and concerns you have.
So it came to the water candy materials and handout. You're seeing it could not happen?
Well...
Not saying it won't happen?
Um...
That's a decision that be made later?
It's a decision yet to be made. I mean, we actually have trouble with candy anyway. I mean, it wouldn't break our hearts not to throw out candy and water bottles.
Aw, man.
Only because, only because it's a mess with the end of the day because there's a lot of throwing before it gets to the curb, and we like to keep kids safe. But we all know that kids get enough candy to hold them through till Halloween. So, you know, if you're at the front of the parade, if you're at the front of the parade at Dairy Castle, I will assure you, between there and the Biddles and Hurt Funeral Home, you will have plenty. Those of you who sit downtown around the Courthouse Square, you're probably a little on the lean side. But, you know, if there's an issue, I mean, we all know that if we go anywhere, we have to have masks. All of our workplace requires to have masks. You know, we have to wash our hands and do the hand sanitizer every time we, every time we talk to somebody and wipe down chairs. I mean, even at our bank, we're doing those kinds of things every single time we talk to an individual or work with an individual. So I would say at this point in time, if I had to make a decision for tomorrow, we would not be handing out material or bottles or...
Popsicles or...
Yeah. And you know, it's, for a lot of people, not only is it a great event for people to watch, but for the people who are in it, you know, we have a lot of businesses who like to promote what they do. We have a lot of the, you know, the political candidates get to go through and just remind everybody there, there's going to be an election. And then we have all the baseball teams, but now baseball, you know, the youth baseball for the summer's been called. I've already kind of gotten a little bit of a hint that I'm not going to have probably high school bands because the schools aren't back. So there's just a lot of information to weigh, and so I'm happy to take any extra with you, but I want you to know that we are vetting it and talking about it seriously and hard and trying to make a good decision.
Anybody online have any questions for Nancy?
Nancy, Stacy Langdon here. I just, I have some concerns with the parade, and I feel like it wouldn't be better to err on the side of caution. If we have a parade, there's going to be a lot of people out there. You're saying if you have the parade, you may not have the participation that you expected in the parade, so it's not going to be our typical parade. I just, that many people together, very closely together, and then the folks that are lined up and coming through the parade, I just, I hate to say it, but this may be the year that we pull back just for safety reasons and for the good of our, you know, folks living in Greencastle, because if we have the parade, people are going to come out and watch it.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'm going to amplify Stacy's concerns here a little bit. This is Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
We're talking about July 12th, and we're talking about the pandemic going on way beyond that date, as far as I can tell. And it seems to me that the fair itself is more important than the parade. That's where the participants really get to do their thing, show their wares, their animals, et cetera. So I really question whether the parade itself is more important than the fair, and are we just, I mean, I hate to see it not go forward, but I share Stacy's concerns.
Thank you both. I hear and understand exactly what you're saying, and we have had that conversation within the Committee that when you talk about 4-H, the parade, as far as being in numerical order, what's most important, the parade is way down on the list. We understand that. The most important part are those kids and those projects and everything that they've worked for. We're just a kickoff. We understand that.
This is Adam, and I guess I'm going to echo, I think I'm going to probably be a broken record by the end of tonight on my views on a lot of this stuff. I mean, when I look at the parade and when I'm looking at things, I'm looking, what do we have to open to get our economy moving? And that's one level. But I just think the parade is, is going to be almost an impossibility. People aren't going to wear, we can sell them to wear masks, but, you know, the little bit I've been out in the stores and stuff, and I've really only been out once in eight weeks, I'm not seeing people wearing masks. If it's 80 degrees outside or 90 degrees that day, masks are going to be brutal. People pass on the streets. That's what makes the fair fun. I just think if there's a year to err on the side of caution and we talk about the value of each thing we do, I love the parade, but maybe we try to do something more with the fair, and we come back to the parade a little later on. So I'm going to, I guess, echo my colleagues Stacy and Dave in being hesitant to want to go ahead with, with the parade this year. You don't need a vote from us tonight, do you, Nancy?
No, no.
I asked Nancy to come a little early for the very reason...
That's fine.
...some of you guys mentioned.
That's fine. I'm sure we're clear.
And again, to give her some time so that she, if she wanted to get the permits in and allow NDOT to process them, that that could happen with the understanding that those permits may never be pulled if the parade is canceled. The other issue was this whole thing with Purdue being of the day after our council meeting. That's another reason why I asked her to come early.
I'll be, I'll be part of the broken record here. This is Veronica. You know, I shared with Nancy earlier that, you know, just from a logistical standpoint, that the idea of having folks traversing on sidewalks while folks were also seated in their customary places in the parkway, that by its very setup violates the six-foot rule. You can't set up a lawn chair in, in the parkway there and have it be more than six feet away from the sidewalk. It's just a, it's a physical impossibility.
By then, but by then, the restrictions have lifted, right?
Is that, sorry, Lori, were you, were you saying something?
Just said, by then, I think the restrictions have been lifted, right?
Yeah, July 4th, the Governor lifts, lifts all the restrictions, and this is on July 12th.
And if they're not throwing things, that will make a big difference. The kids won't be lined up right by the curbs, I assume.
Part of my question, and if we aren't voting on anything tonight, you know, I think it's probably a moot point, but there's nothing to say, you know, we can punt to somewhat and say, hey, Nancy, go through the permitting process with NDOT. Why don't we get more time to sort of figure out where things are, right? And if the condition or the virus worsens, and we do have that second piece, you know, we have a June council meeting where we can say definitively, no, it's a no-go, right? Or the Fair Board can say that, or the Parade Committee can say that, or whatever can say that, versus now saying, oh, it's a no-go, and then if things drastically improve later on, it's, it becomes sort of a moot point after that, right? I'm not a pessimist, or I'm not an optimist about sort of the virus in general, right? I do think there is something to be said about people being able to be in control of their own health, and if folks don't feel safe in going to the parade, then they shouldn't go to the parade, right? It's not like it's a compulsory for people to go to the fair parade to begin with, right? But also recognizing, yeah, we have to promote public health. Part of me just says, you know, I don't know that in May 12th to say something can't happen in July, that seems a little premature to me. I would almost say, why don't we, you know, Nancy can go through and proceed to that, and if we get to the June meeting and we say, oh, my gosh, things are worse, things haven't gotten any better, stuff hasn't changed, make the call at that point would be my two cents.
I think the question I'm going to ask in June is what direction is it going in Putnam County? I think, you know, people are in charge of their own health and stuff, but when you have a contagion that spreads throughout the community, you're balancing business, you're balancing public health, you're balancing a lot of things. The question I'll probably ask in June, not of you, Nancy, but when I look at stuff, is what direction is the overused word curve going? Are we seeing some flattening in Putnam County? Are we continuing to see an uptick? Where are we going? And then that can guide, I probably will guide you all even more than it guides us. So...
That is very true.
Nancy, this is Cody. I just wanted to say that I agree with something everybody has said tonight. I'm happy to work with you on whatever timeline we might propose moving forward, but my concern moving into it was I wanted to see what Purdue Extension's rationale was for moving forward. I'd really like to hear that. I agree with Dave and appreciate him making the point that the fair is more important than the parade, despite the projects and the kids and their animals, and, you know, that's what I'm definitely shooting for in the summer.
And Greencastle High School did just schedule their graduation for July, what, 16th, right? Yeah.
Yeah, July 16th, yeah, four days after.
They'll be having that gathering, so...
Nancy, do you feel you have enough direction from Counsel to keep moving forward?
I have good direction. I have great direction, and I appreciate you, and I appreciate you letting me come here and have the conversation with you so that you know what's going on and that, again, the public understands that we are trying to weigh that decision. And yes, I will be back, and it will, you know, we will know, we will know a lot more...
Your Committee will have made a decision, probably.
In ten days, we will know a lot more and make, and be able to make a decision, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll make sure, let us know if you don't need to be on the agenda, otherwise we'll put you back on.
I will, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Next, excuse me, special request is Moore's Bar and Grill. Julie Meyer, if you want to step forward and talk about your street closure request.
We arrived at the fair.
And maybe, maybe introduce yourself in case, in case somebody may not know who you are.
Yeah, it's Julie and Pete Meyer, owners of Moore's Bar and Grill. First of all, I just want to say thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Lori, Linda, everyone here, for allowing us to come and speak to you about a really big concern of ours. It's not just a concern for us as owners at Moore's. It's a concern for small businesses of this community. They are the heartbeat of this community. They've been hit hard. There's a lot of them here. They could tell you stories for days, probably. We're eight and a half weeks in, I think, since the shutdown occurred. So we have to be creative, innovative, and come up with a way to survive. So that's why we're here. And do you want me to explain our proposal?
Yep.
Our proposal is to temporarily, it's kind of a two-part, temporarily shut down just with barricades, the south part of Indiana Street between Walnut and Washington Streets, to allow to have picnic tables, which we've already researched, pretty reasonable. They fold up, we can put them away, they're, they're weatherproof to put outside. And in conversation with many of you, I think the better idea is probably to put them in the parking spaces or the bumpouts that's like up by Joan, Starbucks, to allow for a fire lane. Heaven forbid that happens on that street, but if it does, you know, we have safety for everyone. This will increase our capacity. Right now, we're able to open dine-in at 50% capacity, which is quite challenging. And I'm sure you've heard the Governor's Directive that we can go to 75%. I think it's June 14th. That doesn't affect us. Once you're at 50%, you're done. Social distancing, you're done. We cannot increase any further indoors. That's it.
Because of your size.
Right.
Fire code is 70.
At our place.
At our place. We have 35 seats currently in use, and there is no way to increase from 35 seats indoors. Lori, you were in there today, so you understand the way it's set up, and that makes it very difficult for us to even increase once we hit that June 14th date. So...
And it's no different for Chris, it's no different for Joan, for Starbucks, for any business downtown. Once you, you look at how tables are set up, you have six per table maximum, and then you have six feet. So we're all going to do the maximum. We've done it. We're done. So in order for us to survive, we have to think elsewhere. And that's summertime, let's go outside.
Does, does Counsel have any questions regarding the request? I will say, I want to thank our staff, department heads here. We had a lot of conversation today. Lori and Tom met with Excise Police and, and asked some questions. You know, we've had some conversation about, you know, various aspects about who helps with trash removal and things of that nature. I don't want to get into all those details tonight because we could probably be here for three or four hours, but I think tonight, the concept of closing the street from, you know, as soon as some contracts could get signed and insurance provided to July 4th is the request before Counsel.
So you're, you're proposing to set the tables up in the parking spaces on both sides of the streets and leaving the two driving lanes somewhat open for emergency vehicles if need be?
Correct.
But there'd be barricades at the end of each, at the end of the blocks.
Then as well as we have... Right, and we have bumpouts on like the upper part of the streets, so they could put additional tables up there, which is basically in line with those six open parking spaces.
With parking spots.
And I think it even goes beyond at some point, you know, if you're at Wasser Brewing Company or you're at Almost Home, can they put tables outside? It's just something for you to think about in the future.
On their sidewalks.
Right. For an equal opportunity.
That depends. In your situation, it's wider, so with the, like, for instance, not right in front of your building because you still have to maintain a three-foot walkway for ADA accessibility. So there's some issue, like with picnic tables. That would be too wide. So you'd have to maintain three, three foot. And then there's the issue of serving alcohol, too, which is another issue. Carryout, you're going to be doing carryout, so we've, we've talked to Excise, we've talked to Excise about that. And there, there are definite distinctions between being served alcohol and not. So, so that would, and you understand what those are. So I guess, opening it up, we'd have to look at every single plan for every, everybody. We're just talking about you guys tonight.
Okay.
But not that, that we would say no, but, because we wouldn't. But I don't know that we're prepared unless you want to bring it up. We could talk about you next. We could talk about you next. But, but in most places, if you're talking about a big amount, it would be too much unless you're going into the street and then the parking maybe, but... But as far as your concern, we were looking at it, the big, one of the questions, we have a number of questions that actually I'd like some direction on from the, from Counsel. First, the general concept, if you're agreeable to it. But second of all, if, if you think it would be better, they've requested it to be 10 to 10, 10:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. Would you prefer it to be a shorter amount of time, or would it just be easier and more, would it be easier for folks to just get used to it just being closed permanently, the, the road just being closed from, until July 4th, period?
And just leave it closed, 24/7?
Just leave it closed, so...
Give it closed.
So then, so then they don't have to take the tables in and out. People don't get, think it, oh, it's going to be open when it's not, or it's closed when it wasn't, and, you know, that kind of thing. So there's no confusion, they're just used to it being closed. You know, that's one of the questions I had. Will it be used...
I don't have a problem with the 10 to 10 timeframe or keeping it closed indefinitely, but I think because the precedent has been set, not by this body, but the street closure next to Redwood... closure next to Red Works, I mean, that started off from a public safety standpoint, but given the must have gone on, it seems to have just been prolonged out of convenience, I think. And I can't justify approving this closure, given what we've done already. So I, I would approve this. I don't have a problem with it.
I'd make the motion that we approve.
As to whether or not it stays closed all night long.
I'd make the motion that we do it and we do it for 24 hours. And that later on in the meeting, we come back and address Red Works. Because enough's enough with that.
Well, they're, they're going to be opening the road on Friday.
Well, I'll discuss it in the council report, but if they don't at next month's meeting, I'm going to make a motion to instruct our attorney to get the road open. Enough is enough with them. That's my view. I don't care. I don't care.
Well, let's, let's stick to the task at hand.
Well, that's what I was doing.
Do we have a second from?
I will second Adam's motion to approve the request.
Veronica?
Veronica.
Okay.
Do we have any, we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have any additional questions?
I do.
Yes.
I have some other, I have some other, I have some other points that, that, but we can do the, we can do this and then iron out some other issues too. But I'd like to, we, we need to talk about, like, trash and, I assume they're going to provide their, the tables.
Correct.
Okay. And then we do our normal trash pickup, but as far as extra trash, I think you all are going to have to figure out how to do the extra trash.
Well, our, our thought is we use Jack's Trash Service, which is a dumpster that's behind the building in the city parking lot. So we are going to contact Jack to see if he can provide some larger closed lid structures out in front. And of course, our staff will continually empty those, put them in the dumpster, take care of it, have Jack come in more often if, if need be. I mean, that, that's not an issue with us.
We'll cover the difference in the trash. That was the expectation.
Okay, great.
Lori, wouldn't it be like?
What?
Lori, wouldn't, I mean, I'm assuming here that they're going to provide us insurance, like any road race.
I talked to them about that.
Right. That, just like we expect the fair and others to pick up the trash generated, they're going to pick up any trash that your patrons leave on the ground from eating outside.
Right.
I, and maybe I'm oversimplifying this, but in my mind, it's much like we do other type of event closures, you know, insurance, liability waivers, and they're responsible for returning the street to, or the area to cleanly positioned, right?
Right.
We're currently, we're, we're aware that there'll be a contract with the city that we will meet every expectation within that contract.
I'm sure you will. I didn't mean it like that. I'm sure you will. I just, that was kind of my thought in the motion, that it was a standard.
Yep.
Something we've done before.
You're right.
One of the questions that came up amongst department, I'm without, everybody's six feet away from me, so I'm just going to pull this down. The, one of the questions that came up was about live music. And right now, the governor, we confirmed with the Excise Police that live music isn't allowed at this time. So that's off the table. I don't know if you need.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
And let's see, what were some of the other points that we needed to make here? If, if you need security, that would be on you for security. We don't have enough police for, for taking care of that. Shouldn't, we shouldn't, and we don't anticipate that, especially if you're not going to have live music.
That's not the intention.
Our, our hours at Moore's Bar will not be what our normal hours are prior to COVID and post, once everything falls out. We are open till 10:00 and we might stretch it till 11:00 on the weekends. So we aren't even open regular hours at this point and probably won't be. And we'll announce when we do. Go beyond those hours.
We also have health department regulations inside. We, I talk to Lisa Zeiner on a regular basis. I'm her best friend. And those will, those will, those will stretch outside as well, because it's just as important. If someone is sitting at a table, then our crew goes out as soon as they get up. They sanitize. There will be hand sanitizer at every single table. Let's hope no one steals it.
I saw it already. You already have that on your table. So I saw that.
Yeah, we, we have to. So I mean, that, that, it's, it's inside regulations that are just now sitting outside. So that's why we need to be able to see these tables. We have to have a viewpoint. We have to see the customers. We have to know every precaution we have to take.
And, and from an alcohol standpoint, I'm in regular contact with Emily.
Yeah.
From Excise. And we, we talk just about every two weeks, just to make sure that we're following what Excise is and their expectations. So we're not, we're not trying to do anything above and beyond what is allowable by law. And we will follow that to a T.
So Pete, will this, well, there be servers out there serving? Because you can't serve alcohol. They'll be serving, bringing sandwiches and stuff like that? Or is it all going to be just carryout?
It's all going to be carryout.
Okay.
They might deliver the carryout box outside of food, but it'll all be in a carryout container.
Nobody's going to come out and say, would you like a refill on your soda?
No, they have to come inside for that. And I don't know if you're aware of the, the alcohol carryout rules, but they, they are that, because there's, there's no open container law in the city of Greencastle. So what happens is we can sell alcohol, but it has to be in a sealed original container. So they could buy a can of beer and walk outside, sit on a picnic table, open it and drink it. We cannot take it to them. We will not take it to them.
Right.
So that's kind of how that works.
We do have an open container law for, in vehicles, though.
Yes, yes. Let's make sure that's clear.
But, but the, the key is what we're going to do from a business standpoint is purchase aluminum, you know, twist tops, so that those individuals won't be taking glass out onto the street.
No glass.
So we will, we will not be allowing glass to leave Moore's Bar.
My, my last question for you guys, we had talked some about the alley, yes or no? Yea or nay? What do you, what are your thoughts?
And Julie brought this point up when, when I brought that up to her. We can't see it. Therefore, we can't control it. And first of all, my comment to you was.
Yeah, right.
The smell. So, but we can't control it and we have to be able to control what we, see what we can, can't control.
I mean, even if we, and this affords us to hire back more employees, which I think is very important to our economy here and, and our local businesses. But even if we put an employee out there, we just don't feel safe putting an employee in an alley that, that we cannot see. It's, it's just, it's just too dangerous.
Okay. Well, I've, I've already started the draft, so tomorrow morning, we should have that done.
Go ahead, then I'll come in.
Julie, this is Stacy Langdon. I think it's a great idea. And I also think that the 24 hours makes a lot more sense because you're not moving barricades and people aren't confused. They know that it's closed. My question to you, we've got other businesses, we've got other restaurants, we've got a hair, couple hair salons on that road. Every, are all the businesses aware of what your plan is and do they support it? And I know we also have some apartments. And have we talked to some, anyone who's in those apartments? Because the street will be noisier until 10:00.
Well, I will let you know that I, I did send an, a mass email to as many as I could find, but I really leaned on Mike Richmond and Brian Cox, who did all the legwork for us. And, and we intentionally did that because they could provide an unbiased opinion. It's not their fellow business coming to ask them for some help. It's the head of Main Street and it's the head of the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. So they might be better able to answer your question than, than we are.
They're here, Stacy, if, if you want to hear from them.
Stacy, also, we have Chris Johnson, who oversees the Tenzin Family Building. Joan from Scoops is here, and Chris Weeks from Wasser Brewing, who have all extended their support.
Who we got back there?
Damien.
And Damien from Tap House and Bridges. So they're, they're all in, in here in support.
Good.
All the retail spaces.
All the retail spaces.
Are they all sitting six feet apart? Because you know I can't see them.
I think they are.
Couple of them are right next to each other, but everybody else is six feet apart.
Good, thank you.
We got plenty of room. So with, with the others, I mean, you're, you're footing the bill for this. How, I mean, are you okay with, you know, the other establishments? You, I mean, there's going to be people coming out of those restaurants and using your tables.
It's, it's, it's all about the community.
Okay, good. I just want to get that out there. I mean, obviously it's.
We understand that. And if, and if the, the Tap House doesn't put tables on their side of the street and they come over and sit on our table, we're good with that.
We're fine. Exactly.
But again, you're going to be the ones picking up the trash, even if the beer cans end up in the alley at night. You've got that, right?
We're totally in.
Got it. And you're the ones with the harmless language and the indemnity.
We're, we're totally in. Understand, we want what's best for, for Greencastle and, and I think that we're doing this.
That's, that's terrific.
Lori, you said something I didn't know.
What?
You're saying that in the, in the city of Greencastle, open container law.
Yeah, that's true.
You can walk down a sidewalk in a residential neighborhood drinking a beer, correct?
You can't be publicly intoxicated, though, Adam.
I understand that.
There, there's a law against that one.
I just.
Personally, Adam.
I.
That's, that's correct. We don't, we don't have, we don't have an ordinance regarding that. But we do regarding in a vehicle as, and there's, and there's a state law on that too.
Interesting. I'll move.
And I guess the state law, I guess the state law just changed too, just since this is public information now. And I learned a lot from Excise today. The, the, you, if you buy a bottle of wine at a restaurant and you drink part of it and you want to take it home, you need to have it placed, recorked, placed in a bag, have the bag sealed, and place it in the farthest place away from the driver, the, the, the wheel. So back in your trunk.
Exactly. Or the open container.
For, yeah. So that's part of the new open container law for the state. So.
Interesting.
A little public service.
For bringing this to our attention because they've got the perfect spot for this. And I'm glad that we can have the opportunity to help them out. So we're all in this together. So hopefully this will help out business and help us get us back on track.
I have a clarification I'd like to get on the motion and also a comment to make. The clarification is, are we closing that whole block off? Or are we doing what we discussed with you earlier today, Lori, which is using the parking spaces but leaving the road open so a fire truck can go down the middle of it once we get Red Works out of the way?
I think we're closing the street and letting them use the, but just so that if a fire truck, the, the street will still be closed. They'll only be using the parking spaces, but it will still leave the street open in case, or there will no, there won't be seating in the middle of the street in case the fire truck needs to get through. But the street will still be closed. But there just won't be any seating in it. The seating will be in the parking spaces. Does that make sense?
I can support that. My comment is, and this is a, again, a statement from last month, is, you know, we have restaurants that are trying to stay afloat. We've got an awful lot of first responders out there that, you know, our police, our fire, Krogers, CVS. And I had somebody stop me in the post office the other day and said, last month, you mentioned these sponsorships for various organizations that are on the front lines and that some of the restaurants are willing to provide that service to their employees. And so I just want to, I want to reiterate that. And if anybody has an interest in that, I'm happy to forward the information about how you go about doing that. And Sue and I have tried to be supportive of Moore's and a lot of other places. And, you know, I hope some others will take up the cause. Because just because we're putting tables out on the parking spaces, doesn't mean all of our restaurants are going to survive.
And Dave, we thank you for that.
Oh, you're welcome. No, thanks, Nancy.
I think the street department thanks you for that too. And they thought Moore's was awesome. I got the, I got the word back on that.
No, that's, that wasn't my point, but thank you.
I know it wasn't.
Okay. Any further questions? Linda, can you call the roll, please?
Counselor Hammer.
Aye.
Counselor Cohen.
Aye.
Counselor Langdon.
Aye.
Counselor Predrell.
Aye.
Counselor Eckert.
Yes.
Counselor Murray.
Aye.
And Counselor Wade.
Aye.
The approval was passed unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you. We, we appreciate your support. And Lori, you'll follow up with us on details?
Moving on, we have, if anybody wants to leave, you're more than welcome to stay. It is a public meeting, but if you want to head out, that's, that's fine to you.
I'm checking to start.
Thank you, Bill.
Tomorrow.
Okay. Next on the agenda is department reports. I don't know how many of our department heads are on, but we have a few. And so department reports were included in the packet, but if, I know Rod will probably want to say something. He was on earlier.
This is Stacy. I have a question for Rod. Pickleball courts, tennis courts, are we on target? Do we have any idea when they might be opening up? Or what's the plan?
They were laying asphalt. Go ahead, Rod.
Go ahead, Bill. All right. Yeah, he just give your report. Um, yes, we have McCulloch Escubating is in yesterday and today. Yesterday, they laid asphalt, the initial layer. They then, shoot, they cut, cut the edge around and did some final touches to it. The Grady Brothers will be in probably Thursday or Friday of next week to put down the top layer. So it's exciting. Give, give it time to cure. We'll put some color coating down, let that cure. We'll put in the posts, fences, add the nets, all that kind of stuff. I'm hoping we should be ready by July 1st. If not before, but July 1st.
Other, other questions for any department heads?
Is Tom online or not? If not, that's okay.
Tom's here.
Hey, Tom.
Tom's here, Adam.
How you doing? I'm just curious, you know, we're hearing a lot nationally about the uptick in domestic violence, mental health calls, all of that. And I was kind of looking at your report. It's hard for me to judge month to month. But what are the officers on the street hearing? Are we seeing more domestic and other types of calls during the lockdown or not?
We are seeing a few up calls in the domestics and disturbance calls. But overall, I will tell you, our call numbers are down. When I was comparing May, or May the 1st through May the 14th today to the other month, we're anywhere from 75 to 100 calls left this month where we were like for January and February when we weren't dealing with COVID. So the overall call runs are down, but domestics and disturbances seem to be getting more frequently. Hopefully by stage two and stage three, people can start getting out and about, those will start dropping, just because people aren't cooped up like they were.
Well, thank you, both you and the fire department.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom, while we've got you, obviously a big furor in Indianapolis about the body cams. And glad that we have those. And I assume that's standard procedure for your officers?
Yes, Dave. All of our officers are issued those and have been since the prosecutor purchased them for us probably six to eight years ago. So yes, it's standard. Each officer wears them while they're on duty.
That's great.
Just a quick follow-up on, on Tom's comments about domestic violence. Scott Monnet has been kind of coordinating some of the social service agencies. And, and they have seen, you know, an uptick in requests for a whole variety of assistance. they have seen, you know, an uptick in requests for a whole variety of assistance. Everything from rental assistance to some domestic violence to food insecurity and other things. So he has worked to coordinate some of that activity with the social service agencies on behalf of the county.
Tom, while we still have you, we're celebrating support for our police this week, and I understand that Officer Hyatt is coming up on his fifth year anniversary and on Saturday, Skip Inman is going to finish 20 years on the force. And I just want to say a special thanks to all your staff, but especially to them. And it was a a little birdie named Lori Hardwick who told me that today.
Yeah, that is correct. We did. It's kind of hard to do with all the restrictions, do any type of recognition gatherings for both of them, but we did recognize Officer Hyatt on our Facebook page acknowledging that he did complete five years of service with us on Tuesday, the 12th. And that is correct. Captain Charles Inman with our department, who supervises our night shift, will be completing his 20th year with us on the 16th. And we hope to recognize them down the road, you know, in more of an official ceremony. But right now, with restrictions, we're just, we're getting that out on Facebook, acknowledging that and letting everybody make their comments on Facebook about it.
Well, all of our congratulations to both of them.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and I will pass that on.
Tom, do you want to say anything about the the life save a week or so ago?
Yeah. Put me on the spot, Mayor. I don't remember the date, but a week or two ago, we did have officers respond to a resident east of town. And when they got there, there was a young female that was unconscious. They determined that she was in a heroin overdose. And due to due to our officers being trained and carrying Narcan, they had to administer not one but two doses of Narcan to the young lady, and ultimately, it saved her life. They were able to get the second dose in her by the time fire department EMS got on the scene and she started slowly coming around. And I've not heard any outcome from that fence, but I do know that she did, she did come back and she was transported to the hospital.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments for department heads?
I just wanted to, I mean.
Bill, this is this is Dave, and I would add add one other thing. One is a thank you for the extensive information on mowing that's been hanging out there for a couple of years at least. And thank you, Ernie Phillips, for providing information on in-ground burials. The number was much higher than I thought it would be. And clearly justifies what we're doing right now, but when we get to budget time, and this is something that you mentioned tangentially in a conversation we had, that there are some other cemeteries that have ways of raising funds, and I don't remember the exact terminology, but when we get into budget discussions, I hope you and Ernie will come back to us with what others are doing and how we might supplement the funding because clearly we're going to operate the cemetery at a loss. We have a moral obligation to do that, but if there's a way for us to ensure the financial stability of the cemetery in that department, I think we would all be open to hearing about that. So enough on that tonight. I guess you don't need any formal approval from counsel on the proposal you put together on mowing, and I'm totally OK with that unless you feel you need some support. But it was extremely, extremely well done and gave us, gave me at least, concrete answers on where all that stands.
I was going to ask, you know, if anybody if anybody had any objections or concerns. If not, we'll move forward with the with the proposal. Mark, did you, you were going to make a comment?
Yes. In regards to the water, I was kind of waiting to see, and our water usage, our water sales for March, the April figures aren't on there yet, lowest we've had in the last two years in any month. I don't think we probably are too surprised at that with the DePaul students gone, but you'd expect, well, they're gone every summer, but, you know, water water usage picks up in the summer because of the heat and everything else. But yeah, there's there's only one other month that we were below 30 million gallons sold, and that was back in December of 2018. And we were at twenty, just just a little over 29 million, then we're at 28 million 782 for the month of March. So we are seeing a lot less revenue, I'm sure. And and that that's exacerbated by the closure of restaurants and stuff like that, big commercial users, and and some of our factories and stuff like that are also big users. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Any any other comments or questions for department heads?
Hey, Mayor, it's Tom. Can I make one other point?
Yeah, go ahead.
And Dave briefly touched on it. Dave is correct. This week is considered National Police Officer Week, Law Enforcement Week. If we were operating under normal conditions, they would have a big memorial service out of Washington DC honoring all those police officers who have followed in the line of duty. And I would just like to say, you know, as the police chief for this town, I couldn't be more proud to serve with the best, with a great group of men and women who are on our police department. But more importantly, we have a tremendous support team behind us when we come home, and those ladies and significant others have been providing food for our officers all week long to recognize us and thank us for the work that we do here in our community. I would just like to acknowledge that publicly that, you know, we have a great police department, but more importantly, we have a better support team at home.
Thank you. Very true, very true.
Yes.
Anything else for department heads? Lori, do you want to add anything as a department head?
Nope.
OK. Department heads are released. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Mayor's report. In regard to coronavirus, we received information today that the state is making available $300 million for reimbursement of certain expenses. These are very similar to the expenses we will likely submit to FEMA. We obviously won't be able to double dip, but I've already passed that on to our police and fire folks to take a look at. Our application to OCRE has been placed on hold pending the availability of more funding. Don't know what's going to happen with that. So far, our departments have been doing a great job of coping with our unique work environment, and and so far, we have have good supplies of personal protection equipment. I would remind our small business community to keep in contact with their bankers for any additional stimulus funds that may become available, and our development center does have loan dollars available that they can support our small business community. I did pass out sort of our working city reopening plan. Several of you commented back that it's pretty conservative. I think we're we're leaning on the conservative side because we do have several members of our staff and our various bodies that fall into the high-risk category, so certainly we want to try to do as much as we can to protect them. I would remind the public, though, that if somebody does need an appointment with one of our staff members, we can do that if we are not able to conduct the business via email or telephone. So, for example, we've had some in-person meetings with people who've applied for building permits and things like that. I mentioned, does anybody have any questions or concerns about our reopening plan? I will say it's a work in progress and, you know, could change depending on what the governor's executive orders come forward. OK. Hearing none. Move on to mowing. I did email everybody on that. If nobody has any objections, we'll we'll move forward with that. I know Ernie's anxious to get it, get some college kids hired to help out with mowing, and I know Rod also wants to get a couple of folks on board as well. Any objections? OK.
Again, Bill, thank you for the legwork and everything else that went into all that and, you know, getting bids and what have you.
Well, Lori helped get the contract ready. Ernie and Rod put a lot of time in it and, you know, and we were very fortunate. We had some good bidders, too. Budgets, we have asked Department of Local Government Finance on, you know, revenue projections for this year and the next few years. Unfortunately, they're in the same kind of boat that we are, that they're still kind of trying to figure out what's going on. We did receive word earlier in the week that there would be $2.44 billion in support for local government coming into the state of Indiana. I emailed the governor's office to find out how that will be distributed. I have not heard back yet, so hopefully we'll be in line for a few dollars. And and certainly, we're working to make sure that we, if we can apply for funding for reimbursement for some of our unusual expenses, we're getting that ready, and Linda's compiling that information for the benefit of the city. The 231 Public Information Meeting that was rescheduled for May 18th has been postponed again. We did have several teleconference meetings on Monday. That project continues to move forward. DePaul Projects, Jackson Street, as most of you know, is part of the south end of campus renovation. There's a second phase to the Stormwater Project. That second phase is to put three large culverts under Jackson Street. There is rock in the way, so that'll be a fun project for them. They have tentatively set a Jackson Street closure from July 22nd through September 28th for the installation of those culverts. So there will be some inconvenience. They have passed on sort of a local detour for us to review, and then truck traffic will be detoured over US 231 and the Southern Highway. They will, they will also be contacting neighbors and things like that as they've done for other projects. We did also, just one other thing on the revenue side of things. We did, Jeff Mahan, our city engineer, did attend an Endot webinar here, and Endot indicated that travel earlier this year was down 40%, so certainly that is having an impact on gas tax revenue. We don't, we didn't get any indication yet as to how soon we'll start seeing that, but it could show up later this year. So certainly, we're trying to try and take those things into account until we get some direction from from the state on what what those exact dollar figures might be. And then I did mention, and I know this is an area of consternation, and I will take responsibility for it, so you guys can beat me up, and I do feel I've been taken advantage of, but that's beside the point. The Indiana Street will, I've been told by the contractor, will be open Friday. They started cleanup yesterday. I haven't been by there today, but it's my understanding all the scaffolding is down. They have completed the acid wash of the brick, which is the final part of the installation, and they have made arrangements for their paving contractor to come in and repair the street cut that was made for the water and sewer line installation. Any questions?
Thanks for taking care of that, Bill. I know you were taken advantage of. It's it's sad, you know, we try to help people, and then that's the end result. I think, you know, moving forward, unfortunately, other companies will pay the price when you or others are a little more cynical. Rather than killing your cat, just makes me laugh.
Well.
I love it.
Sometimes you try to do the right thing and doesn't always work out that way.
Well, and maybe part of the silver lining or whatever, I mean, when we got to March 24th, 25th, and, I mean, there was no traffic downtown anyway, so having that street closed, I don't think really made a bunch of difference. Traffic's definitely picked up now, but but there, for several weeks there, I don't think it really made a difference at all, other than for the fire department.
Thank you for the kind kind words. You know, despite our frustration with the street not being closed, that is a significant investment in the community, and I don't have a final number, but I understand it will be creating about 40 jobs for the community. I need to confirm that number, but that's what I've been led to believe.
Not to mention assessed value.
Yeah.
In a, in a district.
They have started selling some product out of bridges, but they are looking for a little later in the summer, and that's primarily being driven by equipment deliveries. Our city building inspector tells me that the exhaust hoods and things like that have been delivered, but there's still some, you know, obviously, there's going to be a lot of equipment and fixtures in the building, so I think some of the the final opening date is going to be driven by delivery of things, and I'm sure that process has probably been impacted by the COVID pandemic, like a lot of other things. Linda?
So a couple of things. I think you all know that we had our 2019 audit. Our exit conference is Monday. Is it 11 o'clock or 1 o'clock? I don't know. I'm going to. It's either 11 or 1:00, so anyways. But but I'll send out the the Zoom notification and have everybody call in that wants to come in, call in. So that'll go out Monday morning. Our other two audits have been issued for '17 and '18. You can find those at the State Board of Account website. They're pretty boring because they have no findings, so you won't have any.
That's what you want, boring.
Have any exciting news of what the, how the clerk treasurer messed up the financial statements or anything, so they're pretty boring. '19 will be pretty much follow the same suit, so. But anyways, we did have three audits this year. That's the first time we've ever had three audits, so, but they they were done fine, so.
I would guess probably a record time for the shortness of time spent auditing as well.
Yeah, so.
Not to mention the fact that the audit was done, you never saw the auditors.
Right. It was all, it was done remotely, so we have gone to a system here where everything's scanned in and can be.
Did we still have to pay them, no, Mark?
Yes.
Sure we will.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's a claim, isn't it?
I think our, are they, one of our bills for our trash utility audit for $2,400 and some odd dollars.
That's just for the trash.
That's just for trash. The water and wastewater is the same amount, and then I think it's $4,000 for our our general fund audit. That's the city.
That is a bargain.
Yeah, so if we were having somebody else do it, you know, it'd be like three times that. Yeah, so anyways, it's it's it is what it is. So they did it remotely. It was done very quickly. So it is. Another thing that I just want to kind of give a public notice to is we here at the city have been receiving a lot of information about scams that are going on, whether you start getting email scams or, you know, unusual checks in the mail. Everybody just needs to be mindful of those, and if you do start seeing those, you are welcome to call the police department on the non-emergency number and report those. But scams are up, are on the rise quickly. I'm sure Mark probably gets some of that information, especially with folks that are going to start seeing their stimulus checks. You should not be asked to send any additional funds to get your checks or anything like that.
Or any identification.
Or identification. They're going to get to you where you last know on tax return, I think, is probably the rule of that, so.
It is, it is too late now to register your bank account online. Get my payment tab the IRS provided went went dark on noon on Wednesday.
OK. So, but yeah, you shouldn't have to do anything special to get checks, and and you shouldn't be getting emails and things like that. So just be mindful of that. And like I said, we're seeing that kind of evil information, stuff being issued by the State Board of Accounts on how to keep from being scammed, so it is going on that the public needs to be aware of in their own personal finances not to get scammed. But other than that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Linda. Okay, we'll move on to councillor reports. Anybody want to start for the group?
I'll be glad to do that. I want to thank Tyler for his wisdom, wit, and passion over the last few years. And Tyler, do you have your cowboy boots and your 10-gallon hat yet, or is that still up for grabs?
The hat and boots are, I have them, they are packed away right now. I could have worn it to the meeting tonight, but that would have been, probably better I didn't.
And not even a Wabash shirt tonight?
Most of the public should know that Tyler's, Tyler's taken a job in Texas, for those who haven't heard that already. The only other, the only other thing that I want to mention, thank you Tyler for your service. Tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, many city and county officials have received an invitation to be on a Zoom meeting about a major announcement coming out of Ivy Tech that will have a tremendous positive impact for dozens of this year's high school seniors here in Putnam County. Redevelopment Commission, county officials, a lot of people have been invited to tune in at 11 o'clock. I hope you will. I'm not going to steal Ivy Tech's thunder here tonight, but I'm really, really encouraged by what we're going to hear tomorrow at 11:00 AM. That's all I got.
I just want to thank Tyler, and wish him luck on his new adventure in Texas. You were one of the first people that I came to when I was thinking about public service in Greencastle, and I was grateful to hear your advice and your passion for public service. And I wish you nothing but the best, so thank you.
Tyler, we miss you. Oh, sorry. That was all right. Tyler, we miss you, buddy.
You'll definitely be a miss, Tyler, but we'll stay in touch. I've always appreciated your pragmatism and your fabulous sense of humor that you always bring to the tables as well.
Tyler, this is Stacy. It won't be the same without you. The median age will be a little different now. We have, I have really enjoyed getting to know you, and I know you're local, so I know you'll still be back in town from time to time, and I wish you the very best. And then I have a second point. Bill, I wanted to publicly thank you for your leadership these last 10 weeks. I know you've probably had a lot of sleepless nights, and as you helped us navigate this. From a city council standpoint, it's been great to get your emails, and I really appreciate you communicating with us. I think we get an email every day, and it just makes me feel like you're letting us know where the city is right now, keeping us up to date on things and the challenges. And just wanted you to know, I really appreciate the communication and how you and your team have helped us navigate this crisis.
Well, I have to share a lot of that appreciation with the team, because there's a lot of good folks working for the citizens of Greencastle, both from a leadership standpoint and from the, you know, all of our employees that provide services on a day-in and day-out basis. And everybody's working hard to continue our services with minimal disruption, and also, you know, trying to protect themselves so they can maintain their duties, and as well as provide the best possible service to folks. And I think even beyond the city, some of those emails that I send out to you are developed by kind of the working group that involves city and county, public health, and our hospital officials. And I think overall, the county team is working very well together. Our groups are coordinating things like PPE. We're also supporting some of our nursing homes and things like that. The hospital has done a great job with their protocols to keep staff safe and make sure that the hospital can meet the medical needs of the community. So it's been, it's been a great, great team to work with, so I have to share that appreciation with everybody. Thank you.
Well said, Stacy.
Any other comments or anything?
I was just kind of waiting for everybody online. So Tyler, I too, I mean, it's obviously, we're all very appreciative of the service you've given the city, and we're going to miss you. We look forward to the day that you come back to, because you're a Hoosier boy, so, you know, we look forward to the day you come back to Wabash College and with a promotion of another kind. And maybe you'll reside back in Putnam County even, in our fair city. But we do wish you well, and we know you'll do well down there, and we'll look forward to seeing you occasionally. And again, thank you for your service, and Godspeed.
I would like to echo those words, and Texas is a big state, lots of fun places to explore. I'm not sure about Dallas, but I can testify that Austin and San Antonio are also great cities down there, and take the time to pay them a visit and enjoy them as well. And best wishes for continued success with Wabash and recruiting out-of-state students to come back here to Indiana.
Yeah, thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate all the kind words. You know, one thing, I have to make sure that Adam will still call me on Easter and Christmas Day. I miss those phone calls from Adam on holidays. But have really, really enjoyed my time on the council and work with you all and folks that came before you all. The city is a pretty spectacular place, and this council is a fantastic council. The leadership we have at the city, city employees, we're all very hardworking people, and it definitely makes being on the city council a lot of fun. You know, if there were things I wanted to say in closing, one, it would be that, I think if anyone is thinking about a career in public service, the Republican Central Committee will have to meet soon to find a replacement for me. But this is something that if you are thinking about doing it, I encourage you to pursue it further, and I'm happy to talk to you about my experiences too. But the opportunity to be able to give back to your community and to be able to see firsthand change is pretty spectacular, right? It's kind of like, I don't know, mowing the lawn or doing a load of laundry, in that it may not seem as sexy or as exciting, but when you're done with it, the hamper's gone, right? The grass looks better, and the city ends up being a better place. And I think about public service is like that a lot, right? And so would encourage people that if they're considering a life of public service to be able to do that. I also want to sort of iterate that, or reiterate that, I think the opportunity to work for the government is pretty spectacular. I think it's unfortunate that too often, people associate negative things with government. And I think while that may be criticism, that is necessary at the federal level or the state level sometime. I hope that the city level, folks realize that it is a very pragmatic group, Veronica's words, there aren't Republican or Democrat ways to pave sidewalks or to build community centers, right? It is truly solutions-oriented, and people are working for the best interests of everybody who lives in the city of Greencastle. And so when I hear people kind of badmouth government, I always take offense to that because I think, well, gosh, I know an awful lot of the good people that work in government and work very hard every day to be able to make sure that when you turn the tap, the water comes on, make sure that the water goes away and that your streets are paved. And I think that that work is important. You know, my resignation letter, I touched on a lot of the successes. If there is something that I would say in closing, this is something that I consider, I don't know, a failure is probably strong, but something I do wish that we could have spent a little bit more time on, and I'll encourage the council to do the same. A couple of weeks ago, our community lost a young man who I grew up with and went to school with and played sports with and showed 4-H animals with, out of sort of what has become this idea of deaths of despair that unfortunately happen every day in Greencastle and Putnam County and in our nation. Earlier this spring, I read a book called Tightrope by Nicholas Kristof and Cheryl Wu Dunn that sort of talks about families who are walking the economic tightrope in the world. And he profiles folks from his small town of Yamhill, Oregon, but the faces and the names could just as easily be families here in Putnam County. People are hurting in our community, whether that be from joblessness, drug use and abuse, alcohol, suicidal ideation. And it's something that I think too often goes unnoticed, and something that can get, it's easy to get lost in all of the exciting things when there are a lot of folks who do get left behind. A couple of years ago, I spoke out pretty forcefully in support of a drug treatment center coming to Greencastle. And every time I read a name in the paper or hear about somebody who passed away because of sort of these so-called deaths of despair, it honestly, God breaks my heart. And I do, at times, think about, well, gosh, if we had made it a little bit easier for someone to get drug treatment, could that life be one that we could have saved? And so if there's anything that I would leave the council with, it would be to make sure that we continue to remember people who might otherwise go forgotten, and to make sure that folks who have passed away and left because of those deaths of despair, that their deaths are not in vain. You know, this COVID-19 pandemic has, you know, cost a lot of life from the disease, but also I think we will see for a long time sort of the residual impacts of the economic impact. I think there are a lot of jobs that unfortunately probably aren't going to come back at all in this country when you look at 20% to 25% unemployment. And as neighbors and as community leaders, we have a responsibility to take care of each other and to take care of our neighbors. And so I'll end my soliloquy there, but by encouraging everyone to, again, remember those people who otherwise go forgotten, to look out for one another, and to be mindful that we do everything we can to help prevent those deaths of despair, if we can lend a helping hand that we do that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Tyler.
Miss you, Tyler.
Okay. Moving on, we have approval of minutes from our regular session of April 9th, 2020. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other further comments or corrections or anything? Hearing none. Linda, can you call the roll, please?
Councillor Hammer.
Aye.
Councillor Cohen.
Aye.
Councillor Langdon.
Aye.
Councillor Pedro.
Aye.
Councillor Eckard.
Yes.
Councillor Murray.
Aye.
And Councillor Wade.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Next item of business is approval of city claims.
Okay. I know everyone has gotten those online from Linda, as usual. The payroll for this month is $445,164. Regular accounts payable, just $79,603.89. Pensions, $15,757.62. And direct accounts payable, again, a fairly low number, $193,222.66 for a grand total of $733,744.31. In the direct accounts payable, we have AA Hughburn Sons for the HVAC at the fire station for $14,379. We've got a police car loan payment to First National Bank of $7,761. We've got about $16,176 in three different claims for redevelopment. The, we've also got civil, and one of those is for about $15,000 for civil engineering. We also have another civil engineering claim for $13,305 for Locust Street Engineering. Graves Construction for the pool slides and the amenities there for $66,782.70. We had some reupholstery of our city hall chairs. I guess they were orange before or burnt it?
Yeah, they're over there.
Couple of them are out.
Okay. All right. Anyway.
These chairs had the original upholstery from 1978.
They were such good shape.
We got, yeah, we got our money's worth. And that was $2,815. Marcy's Tree Service for $21,200 for taking down more trees around the city and our right-of-way and parks, and I assume it's parks and cemetery. Direct, and the other direct accounts payable, utility bills and what have you that are normal, of about $50,804. In the regular accounts payable, again, that was under $80,000. Really not a whole lot in there. You guys looked through it, I'm sure. There was an Enos Flint for street materials of $4,677. And the Treasurer of the State of Indiana for missing lease disbursement for $2,024. And I put audit fee next to it, but that's just for the trash audit fee.
Trash audit fee.
And I think that when we pay our, regular audit fee comes out of our property tax district.
Correct. They subtracted at the county.
Yes. So we don't, it's withheld, it's kind of like tax withholdings. You never see it, so you never miss it.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, we do. So I would move for approval of the claims as submitted.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay. Dave seconds. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Linda, can you call the roll, please?
Councillor Cohen, or Councillor Hammer.
Aye.
Councillor Cohen.
Aye.
Councillor Langdon.
Aye.
Councillor Pedro.
Aye.
Councillor Eckard.
Yes.
Councillor Murray.
Aye.
And Councillor Wade.
Claims are approved as presented. We have old business of school board discussion. The, we have two school board appointments, and those applications were emailed out to everyone, so I'll turn the floor over to Mark to run the discussion on the school board appointment.
Okay. So we've got two members. I did contact both of them, and I forwarded you the emails that I sent to them to encourage them also because the township has an appointment, and they had just opened their acceptance of the appointments, I think on May 8th, when ours was ending, and they were going to close it on May 18th. It was a very quick turnaround. We had two individuals that applied, and they both appear to be pretty good candidates, I'd say. I think that's an understatement. So I encouraged them both to maybe go ahead and apply with the township too, since we really couldn't make our decision before the 18th. It would have been extremely difficult with open door rules and trying to, the logistics of trying to meet and everything else. So I would, I would think that we would want to try to possibly meet sooner than later because our goal is usually to have our decision made by the June, City Council meeting, which I believe is June 11th.
That's correct.
Okay. So we probably really ought to try to schedule some, I mean, just one evening of, you know, have one of them come in for a meeting, and an hour later, the other one come in and ask similar questions and what have you. And then we'll take, we can then have some discussion, and, you know, we can, we could possibly even try to meet before June 11th if you so desire. So that's really kind of where we are right now. So I guess maybe we just need to try to get a, get a meeting on the calendar.
Mark, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
I mean, we have a little bit of transition going on with Tyler. I think it'd be nice if the new person could be part of the interview if they're going to vote in June. Do you know when the Republican Party is maybe going to have an appointment?
So they legally don't have to have one until 30 days. I think they have 30 days after my resignation.
Right.
Up to that, so.
I was just trying to make it so that if...
We'll have one quickly.
Pardon me?
We're going to have one quickly.
I was just thinking, you know, we can invite them, make sure they, or anybody who's applying can be at least invited as a guest to the interviews, so that when they vote in June, they would feel like they were...
I don't think we can do that.
They were able to be knowledgeable in their vote.
It's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, so anybody can attend.
I mean, they can come if they want to come to it, yeah.
Yeah, so anybody, I think we could probably encourage anybody that might be showing some interest or whatever, but, I mean, because it is a public meeting, it's an open meeting.
No, I don't know, just making sure they're there so they can be, kind of, at least be invited to be part of the...
Yeah. I don't know, Linda indicated that she thought there would be a quick, a fairly quick decision.
I think it's going to come around pretty quickly.
Okay.
I mean, there are folks that are showing interest, so.
Okay.
So I don't know whether, I don't know whether we'll have them in place by the June meeting or not.
Yeah, that I don't know.
Yeah. Because like Tyler said, I mean, it could be as late as the very end of June, since 30 days after his resignation. since 30 days after his resignation. And I think, Tyler, your resignation's effective May 29th. Is that correct?
Yeah, 29th to 28th, that's Friday.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so anyway, I mean, and of course, if we were to have meetings before the 29th of May, discussions and what have you with our interviews with our candidates, Tyler could be part of that, obviously. He could be anyway, even if, even if it was after that, but he'll be gone. So, but we could try.
He could always Zoom in.
He could always Zoom in. There you go. So, and I was hoping maybe we could try to have, we've got plenty of space here and I was thinking that with this, the importance of this, if it's at all possible, to have a few, few people meeting here besides doing everything on Zoom. So, but that's really up to each one of you, obviously. I'm not, I'm not going to, I don't want you to feel uncomfortable and feel like you need to come in just because Mike said, well, let's try to have everybody here. But we can certainly space out like we did tonight. We had, we had probably a good 10 members of the, out in the audience.
12 members.
12 members out in the audience and nobody was closer than six feet. And, and they weren't crowding us at all. So, so we could, we could do that.
Do you want to set a, set a date for those interviews?
Sure.
Hey, Mark, Stacy here.
Yes.
I'm thinking back to last, I'm thinking back to last time when the school board had their interviews and I think an hour for each candidate is probably a little long. I'm trying to remember, Adam, weren't they like 20 minutes apart or a half hour apart?
I thought we gave him like 40, maybe 45 minutes. We did about 15 minutes of questions, gave him a chance to ask his questions, but I think an hour's pretty long.
Yeah. And I think we, they asked the same questions to both candidates. So we need to get together, you know, the questions we want to ask and that type of thing.
I think last time, and not they had the Lori's job, if not Lori, I can write one up and you can just proof it. We kind of went over legal and non-legal questions. I think most of us know it, but it's probably better just to review it so we don't have any problems.
Well, the problem with saying what are not legal questions is I could give you a million not legal questions.
Well, so generally.
Well, you guys had a list last time and the list was fine. I mean, it's easier.
Yeah, I had my notes from last time.
It's easier to have a list and then, I mean, you obviously know which ones. Okay, all right. I'll give you some guidance. Fine.
I can write it up, Lori, and then send it to you and if you think it's okay.
Okay.
I think I have something from the law that we use.
Okay.
I'm sure I do. I just have to find it.
Okay.
And Stacy, if you've got the questions from last time, it'd be interesting to see what those were.
I do. I have a file with all that stuff in it. So I'll scan it and email it to you, Adam, so you can kind of eyeball it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Don't ask the questions George Murphy used to ask.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't going to throw anybody under the bus. But sometimes people just don't know and it's, you know, it's an innocent mistake.
Right, right, right.
So when are we meeting? Mark, when do you want us to meet?
I am opening my calendar. There it is. So I was thinking about either one of the next two, either next week or the following week to try to have our meeting. What is the pleasure of, is there any conflict with any of those dates with anybody?
The only day I cannot do it is the 27th of May. I have another meeting already.
Okay. And of course, we won't do it the 25th because that's Memorial Day.
So the 27th is also the date that redevelopment commission, we're meeting. So that's not a good night for all of us.
Are we not going to do next week?
We can.
Well, I just, I have something on the 18th and 20th. I have some recruiting Zoom calls, but I can go other nights. Are we going to go at 7:00 or do we want to go earlier?
Adam, I'm happy to take those recruiting calls for you.
I.
That's good, Tyler.
They're all kids from Texas, Tyler.
So I'm hearing the 18th, the 20th and the 27th and the 25th are not good. So we'd look at, we could be there, the 21st or the 28th would be Thursday, that'd be a Thursday night again. 7 o'clock is fine. Or do you want to go a little bit earlier?
Want to just start on like the 21st at 6:00 and schedule 6:00 to 6:45 and.
6:45 to 7:30?
7:30.
That sounds good to me. Has anybody else got a problem with that?
That'll give Linda a chance to advertise it and I assume we're just going to interview. We're not going to discuss that night. We'll wait till June 11th. Can we do that in one motion or we have to have two nights to like, the more I forgot?
No, you can do that in one.
Yeah, I don't think it's an ordinance, so we don't have to.
Oh, uh-uh.
Yeah, okay.
I'd rather we did it all in one night. It'll be fresh in our mind. We can discuss afterwards.
I'm with you, Stacy.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, too.
We just can't take official action.
I am with Stacy as well.
We could take official.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, because it's an open meeting. So.
Public meeting.
Yeah. I don't know that we want to, I mean, if we'd had more than, you know, if we had a lot of candidates, we might be able to, we'd use that to winnow the field a little bit. But I think that maybe it's probably best to, I think in the past, we've always waited to make our decision till the next meet, to another meeting. It doesn't have to necessarily wait all the way to June if you want to get somebody in a little bit sooner. But we don't have to because, you know, the appointment isn't, doesn't take effect till July 1st.
It could be helpful to the township though, because you would remove.
That was true. It would be helpful to the township. I'm going to be very anxious to see who the applicants are for the township because if the applicants to the township are the same two we've got, it's kind of a moot point. We just need to decide who's a point and which one. But we'll see. I don't know whether the incumbent for the township is applying. The incumbent for the, for our, our position did apply.
I understand that the incumbent, I don't want to speak for him, but I was told that he is not going to continue on his role.
That was my understanding too, but I wasn't official that I, that I'd heard the same thing.
So we're going to try to do the whole thing on the night of the 21st.
I don't know that we'll make the final decision that night, but we can if you want to, especially since we only have two candidates. So, but, and I, and I think like, like Bill said, it would be, it would certainly help the township out if, if.
I agree.
If we have, if they have like three candidates and one of them is, or both of them are, the two of ours plus another one.
Stacy, in the interest of, you know, the school board was nice enough to invite you and me to be at least in the audience. Should we maybe send a special invite just so the school board knows if they want to come listen, they can?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I can, if that's all right with you, Mark, I'll just knock that out for you and just let Mike know that we're doing it that night. And if he wants to be here, great. If not.
Have at it.
Well, he was nice enough last time to often include us. So.
So are we doing a Zoom meeting with a few of us showing up? Is that, is that the thought?
I think you have the option for either one.
Hopefully as many as possible.
Pardon me?
You want it as many as possible. I mean, if you feel comfortable.
Yeah, I would think that if you feel comfortable coming to city hall, we've got plenty of room here.
And if you're not comfortable, we'll set up a Zoom connection too.
Certainly.
I'll, I'll be there at city hall that night. Anybody need a Zoom meeting?
I'm debating it.
Okay.
I'll probably be using Zoom as a glasses wearer who hates masks. I'm going to not fog up in my apartment.
And I will probably request a Zoom meeting also.
Okay, we'll go ahead and set it up.
Lori, is it all right for us to continue on Zoom? Has there been any guidance from
the governor's office?
Right now it is. For now.
Yeah, I don't think that he's in, the governor's office isn't even encouraging public meetings at all yet, are they?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so this is going to start at 6:30. Was that it?
Six.
Six?
Six to 6:45 and then 6:45 to 7:30.
Okay, all right.
On the 21st, I will send out an agenda. And we're interviewing both candidates, correct?
Yes, oh, definitely, yeah.
Did you, did you want to leave 15 minutes between the candidates for discussion or anything?
Um, we could.
And so the one doesn't have to hear the other one.
Right, I think that might be best. So six to 6:45 and then seven to 7:45. Is that okay with everybody?
I'm assuming somebody's going to reach out and make.
Phil's Zoom camera for the next meeting, so we're not just staring at the wall.
I've got to get a better easel so I can tilt this. And besides, I haven't had a haircut, so that's why I'm having to stare at the ceiling.
I was wondering if we could take a screenshot at some point of this Brady Bunch before the evening's over.
So, do you think that we will make a decision that evening? Is that the desire of the council to make a decision the same evening since we only have two candidates?
Yes.
Yes. My desire, yes.
I'm assuming that for some reason, if a candidate cannot show, we'll postpone the meeting.
Sure.
Yes.
Well, why don't we have a rain date as the 28th? Is that, is that good enough for everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
If somebody can't show, maybe it makes our decision easy. I'm not advocating that.
Okay. Well, hopefully we'll see everybody at 6 o'clock on, on the, on Thursday, the, my calendar's just cleared, the 21st. And we've got the 28th if we need to go to that date, if that's not convenient. Who's contacting the two candidates? Who usually does that?
Linda can.
Yeah, she can or Linda can.
I mean, Huber.
Linda Huber, okay.
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 And then she'll let me know if it's a problem.
Okay. Is that everything I needed to do?
Yep.
That actually concludes our business for the evening. So with Godspeed, we enjoyed Tyler with his last meeting here in Greencastle until he returns. So good luck and happy recruiting. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
And Tyler, you're welcome, you're welcome to come to that meeting because you're still on the council.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Thank you all. Salute. Second.
Linda, well, was it, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It was unanimous.
That sounded like everybody.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Everybody enjoy the evening.